Fortunately, after his disastrous speech in Phoenix, I couldn't be part of it anymore. It was clear that he didn't want to solve the problem. He wanted to continue to use immigration as a political football like the Democrats do. And I'm not, I didn't want to be part of that anymore.
And other key Hispanic leaders followed you?
Yes. And it, you know, I thought he was a businessman. I thought he really wanted to solve the issue. He sat down with us. He said the right things. I really believed him. But he, something happened on the way back from Mexico.
In two hours?
In two hours. Maybe the real speech got lost in customs. I don't know. But that was not the Donald Trump that I met with and talked immigration with.
So what's the Hispanic community going to do when they get to the...
Well, we're, you know, as Polly said, we've got one party that gives us great lip service, but hasn't really addressed our issues. We have another candidate that has had terrible rhetoric and has demonized Hispanics and immigrants, so we're...
Pretty much everyone. He's equal opportunity in some way.
Well, I think he's focused on Mexicans in particular.
Exactly. Because they're neighbors.
Yeah, so...
And a lot of them work for him. You know, building his hotel.
He likes to remind everyone that.
I was in Washington DC, I was in Washington DC on Pennsylvania Avenue not long ago, and they're building the new, the old post office is going to be his hotel. And everybody that I saw working there looked Latino. Isn't that interesting?
Yeah. And let me just say that, you know, Jacob and I, of course, are good friends. Despite, you know, I come from a very strong enforcement background. I'm proud to say that I've shared a lot of my ideas with Jacob. We actually work very closely together. You know, don't necessarily agree on all the concepts, but I know that, that what we have discussed has been for the betterment of our country.
And more of Latina Voice's Smart Talk when we return.
On the mayor's report, let me just, of course, yesterday was September 11th. That's the day of remembrance and we want to continue to remember all of the families that were impacted, lives that were lost. So we want to continue to do that. And then we want to keep in mind the coastal areas, the east coast, you know, as they get ready to confront Hurricane Florence. So, and it looks like that's going to be, that is a significant storm, a significant storm. So we certainly want to keep them in mind. And then as they get ready to deal with that storm and after it lands, we certainly want to step up and be supportive to them as people were supportive to us. So let's keep them in mind. And then I want to just put forth a cautionary note for all of us on the Texas coast. And hopefully, that system will not, you know, fully develop. But this is an opportunity simply to remind people that we are, this is still hurricane season, and that it's always better to be prepared so that if something should develop, you know, people don't have to rush. So make sure, for example, you know where your documentation is, and just shop ahead of time, you know, just water, medicine, all of those things. Just be prepared. It's always better to be prepared just in case something should develop. Hopefully, you know, we won't get a lot of rain out of this system in the Gulf. You know, you never want to wish any bad luck on anybody, but it appears that it may be trending more south. But I think we are still going to get, we're going to get rain. And so I always have to be mindful of street flooding, ponding in our area. But I just want to encourage people to just be prepared. This is hurricane season and things can change very, very quickly. And so just better to take the time to do that. Let me back up a little bit because they're talking a great deal about the storm surge that will be presented from Hurricane Florence, storm surge up and down that lower east coast. And it's another reminder that were we to face a similar type storm in the Galveston Bay, we could have a huge storm surge that could impact us quite a bit. And so it points out the importance of the coastal spine. You know, we've talked about it, but it's real. I just want, I don't want us to lose sight of that. That is, that is real. We've just been very, very fortunate. We've been very fortunate. But this storm on the east coast that's going to create a huge storm surge, it's going to create a great deal of devastation. You know, we already know that. So I just want to talk again about the importance of mitigation before the disaster instead of, you know, having the disaster and then the mitigation. And the cost of that coastal spine is about 11, 12 billion dollars. And we need, we need to be, continue to be pushing for the funding and the resources to move that project alone. So let's just be, let's be, let's be mindful of that. And then I know I was talking to Councilmember Robinson, I think, is this the 10th year anniversary of Hurricane Ike? Is it tomorrow?
Yeah.
So, you know, these storms are coming with greater frequency and with greater intensity. And we need to do everything that we can to mitigate, to mitigate the risk. Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you, Mayor. I think your comments are right on the money. And considering yesterday's anniversary of 9/11, it is interesting to note that tomorrow is the 10-year anniversary of Hurricane Ike. And of course, we've just celebrated, if that's the word, the one-year anniversary of Harvey. So I have brought with me today and distributed in front of you, colleagues, a card that you'll notice, it's, there's two in front of you, actually. The one that's closest to square is the one that Councilmember Martin and I brought with a delegation in our first trip last fall to Washington DC to advocate for federal assistance in recovery and resiliency. And you'll note that this has detail that we left behind describing the financial and human life consequences that came from the storm back in 2008. So as we think about the 10 years and what really has not yet happened, 10 years since this storm, and I think we've been very focused on the rain events of last year, it's wise, and Mayor, I really appreciate you bringing attention to the threat of storm surge while this reminder on the east coast is going to be a very vivid and relevant reminder. It's a storm that, it's coming right square on the coast. It's going to be a direct hit. And by every prediction, it will linger inland like Harvey did for us. And where that goes, of course, will depend a lot on the damage in the area. So glad you also pointed out about Galveston Bay. The second card that is before you is one that's just been created. I think the word that I'd like to emphasize with this is that it is a proposal that is complementary. It is produced by the Speed Center. It's meant to highlight the potential impact and protection from the so-called midbay solution that is meant to be a shorter-term solution for flood mitigation and storm surge inside Galveston Bay. So it is meant to be complementary to the coastal spine, something that goes with that, something as you'll see, the as you'll see the, the photograph on the front side of the card with the dredging operation. We're already engaged with that along the west fork of the San Jacinto, as Councilmember Martin knows. And the idea behind this is that it would be something that provides both mitigating resiliency, and you can see the diagrams of the before and after of what this could do to protect our coast. And again, it would be something that's shorter term, we could do without the $12 billion impact, but something that we'll have to pull together regionally, but it's something that may very well have a lasting impact for those coastal territories and inside the bay. So I hope this will spark your interest, and there will be more to come about that. There's a website where more information can be found about it. So Mayor, thanks very much for calling our attention to that the day before the 10-year anniversary of Hurricane Ike.
Thank you. And you also mentioned about dredging. I want to point out what we, what we can do in the short term to add more capacity. It's dredging. Dredging of the Buffalo Bayou, that's important because we've lost some capacity there because of everything coming in, coming down. Dredging of Addicks and Barker Dam, that's important, and that can provide additional capacity. The continuation of dredging on San Jacinto River and Lake Houston, that's important. So we've lost capacity over the years, and we have to regain that capacity. And we can do that at a much quicker pace than we can do some of these other projects. So dredging alone, Barker Dam, dredging on Buffalo Bayou, dredging San Jacinto River and Lake Houston are all very important components of adding capacity, especially when we're getting, whether the rainfall, and it continues to come, and you just, everything is very unpredictable. But mitigating the risk is critically important. But let's just lose, and let's not lose sight that, you know, last year we were facing Hurricane Harvey. And now on the east coast, they're facing Lawrence. And at the same time, we've got a system that's in the Gulf. And all of these things are happening at, at the same time. And we are still in hurricane, in hurricane season. I just don't want people to become complacent. I don't want people to become complacent because these things can, can come about very, very quickly. And the only thing I'm, what, what urge people is to make sure that they prepare and go out and just buy some things, just, you know, just as, as a precaution. You know, make sure you have enough water and things of that nature in, in, in your home, so that people are not rushing if something should have happened. And then if nothing happens, you know, you still have it. Okay? So let's do that. And then at the same time, it also points out the importance of trying, of working to get people back into their homes and finish these repairs as quickly as possible. Because the worst thing is, is to be out of your home or be in the midst of repairs and something, something flooding of some event like this occurs. So again, want to be mindful of people a year after the storm that are still struggling to, to recover. Councilmember, start it.
Thank you, Mayor. You brought up the Addicks Dam, and that's been my concern. We, we've got a lot of, you know, attention to the east side, in, in, as it should be. But we should also have just as much attention to the dams that protect the entire city. We've got to make sure that those dams, the capacity is there. I, I've been asking the question as to what the target date, the timeline of any kind of clearing out the capacity. The numbers that I've been told is 20% of the water that was in the Addicks Dam was coming from the Cypress Creek overflow. Yet we're continuing to develop in that, that northwest area, which, you know, you know, everyone's working to mitigate as, as they go. And according to pre-Harvey and post-Harvey design, but we need to understand that until we know what the, that we're going to clear that out, we can't count on that to be a relief valve. I, I need to understand, do you have a date on that Addicks Dam?
On the dredging?
On the dredging, the work?
I do not.
Well, this is something that, you know, if the media wants to, you know, get in, be alarmist or do something about it, I'll start, if I need to holler here, start screaming, you know, or take a plane ride, whatever I need to do. What do I need to do to get attention to Addicks? I mean, that's serious. I've got people contacting me from Bear Creek that do not live in the city of Houston, and they're pleading with me to help them because they feel like they're without, you know, anyone caring about them. The fact is, when it, when Addicks fills up, it backs into Bear Creek and beyond. So we need to make sure that we're, we're giving that as much attention as anything else. I, I don't know what else I need to do to get this right, but that needs to be prioritized. And if it's not, no matter what you do on Buffalo Bayou, there's still going to be a release if we get the same capacity again. And that release is what, is what is scaring people. That, that, not only the controlled release, but the uncontrolled release. And Greg Travis, I'm sure, is still dealing with the aftermath of what happened there. So we need to make sure that we're prioritizing all of these things and keeping all of our plates spinning and keep focused. Thank you.
Thanks. And, and I agree. That's, that's why I mentioned dredging, Addicks, Barker, Buffalo Bayou. Well, we're waiting on a lot, on a lot of the dollars to come, come in. I know a lot of the infrastructure dollars, those are federal dollars, and, and we've yet to, we've yet to get those dollars. You know, we have not yet, you know, it would be nice to have state dollars to do some of this dredging and then reimburse the state, you know. But, you know, the state hasn't stepped up yet and provided us with those dollars for that. So, but it is important because that can provide added capacity. I know when I was out in West Houston, Councilmember Travis, and talking to the people, we talked about dredging Addicks and Barker, and the importance of that and building more capacity and mitigating the risk. So there's, you know, let's just keep pushing, keep pushing, keep pushing, because it's very important. Councilmember Borkins?
Thank you, Mayor. You hit, you took the words out of my mouth. And Councilmember, I clearly understand what you're going through. My concern, Mayor, to the people who may not know the process of this federal money not being in Houston, local government tends to, as I've said before, rub the shoulders and see the constituents on a daily basis, unlike federal and state, well, so much federal. And as we in the midst of hurricane season, if something comes back to Houston, I just hope that there was some way we can get the word out in a very clear and precise way to let them know it is not your local government responsibl, I mean, in terms of the funding. If the money is not in Houston, people, we know this, but people who will be impacted is only concerned about their space. And if we don't, and I know we're doing what we can to articulate the message of the money not being here, I think that needs to be, you know, I don't know if we need to put in Houston Chronicle to encourage people to make calls to Washington. I don't know what we need to do. But I do know this, if it impacts Houston again in any way, they will point the finger at us and our leadership ability. And we've done a great job during, during Harvey, but it's not fair. So I don't know, Mayor, I guess what I'm asking is, is there something we can do, whether it's a press conference, as a unified body, to address this, whether it's the rainy day money, or what, to do dredging, or whatever the case may be. Because I'm very close to paying my own way flying to Austin and going, sitting outside the governor's mansion until he opened that door and can look, I'm not kidding, look me square in the face and tell me why he's not releasing money for the people in Houston when he's sending on money that can be reimbursed through federal money for their rainy day fund. So I, oh, I will do it. I will do it. So my question is, Mayor, is there something we can do to have an impact, to let the message get out and the word get out that it is not local government holding up these projects?
Well, we can continue to, to use our platform to talk about it like we're doing right now. It is a collaborative process. We're all connected, you know, the feds connected to the state, and they're connected to the locals and to the county, to the city. We're all, we're all connected. For the people out there in, in these neighborhoods, quite frankly, they don't care who it is.
That's my point, Mayor. So we-
They don't care whether it's fed, state, local, all they know, if that, if they, if they flooded, they got flooded, and, and, and government is not moving fast enough.
Well, Mayor, Mayor, let me just say, excuse me, before my time run out, what I find ironic, before my time run out. But interesting enough, because this is a serious matter for me, for me. And it's not partisan. If it was President Obama doing the same thing, and I'm not about to jab at President Trump, I would call a spade a spade. Now Greg Abbott can spend millions of dollars on TV commercials. Every day I turn on my TV, I see him. He's spent millions of dollars on the rainy day, on the bathroom bill during a special session. But he cannot find money to help these people that are hurting, whether it's dredging or whatever the case may be, when you're talking about reimbursable funding coming from the federal government. And I, I think that's an insult to the people in Houston and in Baytown and other areas that are hurting, waiting on federal money. But he has, it would be nice if he wait on federal money for those TV commercials that's running every day. So I'm just saying, it's not fair to the people who will blame us or point the finger at us, because I'm getting the questions about the money. And so I just, I'm, this is very serious. We're back in hurricane season, and we still have not gotten the money. And that is a shame.
Well, all water flows downhill. And, and the reality is that we are the closest to the people themselves. So the people can get to us when they can't get to anybody else, and they expect us to come up with answers. And we're going to keep advocating and keep pu, and keep pushing. But it is a collaborative process, and we all have to work together to make, to make, to improve the, the lives of the people that we represent. So that's, that's, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, any sense right now of, just in terms of both bodies, federal and state, and, and I know I've, I've asked this question before, but as time moves on, going to continue to ask this question because I'm afraid of our window closing. As we hear about other major storms, attention is, is, is moving in, in other directions in terms of the other storms that will have needs. And of course, that's logical. It's not something I'm complaining about. And my concern is, are there discussions or any sense that we'll be able to get or secure another supplemental round of funding from the federal government? And is the state planning to outline a plan in terms of the use of the rainy day fund or any other legislation they'll propose? Where are we with regard to, to those two options?
I don't think we can anticipate another round coming from the feds. So I don't think that's going to happen. I think the monies that have already been appropriated that we are waiting to receive, from all indications, that will be it. So I don't think there's going to be another round that they have not already awarded. And of course, the first, that first made a tranche for housing, CDBG dollars, that now is not likely to arrive before the end of November. With respect to the rainy day fund, that's up to the Texas Legislature. And they don't, they don't start until the 2nd Tuesday in January. And I have no idea what they intend to do.
So, thank you for that information. The first piece of it is greatly disturbing to me because, of course, as many of us have, we've been on the ground and are seeing the devastation and the denials that people are facing with regard to claims and the fact that there's just not enough. Are they asserting that there is enough, there is no more unmet need in there, or they won't do a supplemental round, meaning they, the federal government? Or is this a decision to move on because of some other reason?
They're not saying that they're not unmet needs. What they are saying, and I think say it was Senator Cornyn, who's, who's, who indicated that do not expect another round to be coming from the federal government to, for Harvey relief, other than the monies that have already been awarded.
Would public pressure be useful?
Well, public pressure is always useful, but they, but I think from all indications, we, we should not expect another, another round of dollars to be appropriated for Harvey relief.
Would it be possible to get a sense of the, the unmet need based on the funding that we're going to get in this CDBG round, this last supplemental, that we, that we will be receiving? Is there a, a number that we can secure? Because I'd like to encourage residents to write letters, send emails, that sort of thing to Washington. And of course, the same information is pertinent for the state as, as it relates to what they are willing to expend on, from the rainy day fund.
Bill Kelly and Marvin Odom can provide, can provide that information to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now let me, on, on the second topic, and that's the, the series of town hall meetings that we are holding with respect to propositions A and B. The first two have gone well. There have been a number of questions that have been asked that would have been very productive and positive. And so I certainly want to thank Mayor Pretimell and Coin. Started off in District C. And then this week, we were in, Councilmember Colasasneris District and District H. And there were a number of people from District H who were there and asked a lot of good questions. Thank the ad larch councilmembers who showed up. Appreciate, appreciate that as well. We will continue, the next meeting will take place a week from today. And we'll be in Councilmember Mike Lassiter's District, District J. And again, this meeting will start at 6:30. And it will be at the Sharps Town Community Center, 6600, 6600 Arburg Town. And so that will be 6:30 in, at the Sharps Town Community Center. Let me just say, Proposition A deals with rebuild Houston. And again, what we've indicated in these meetings is that this is not adding a fee. This is not eliminating a fee. This is placing a lockbox around the revenue generated that has been generated and will be generated in the future. And that we're making no other changes to rebuild Houston. And what I mean by that, for example, I met with some ministers, and they wanted to know, Mayor, are we removing the exemption for, for churches or faith-based institutions? And what I said to them, no, we're not removing any exemptions, any exemptions that currently exist, especially for faith-based organizations, synagogues, churches, things of that nature. All of those exemptions remain in place. Okay? So there are no changes with respect to rebuild Houston. There's no change in the fee. There's no change in the, in who's been assessed. And so in Proposition A, the voters are being asked to place a lockbox around the revenue that has been collected and will be collected in the future. And the vote, no, leave, will leave it as an undedicated source of funding that could be used by anybody else. I think it is in the best interest of the city and the people in the city to reinstate the lockbox around Proposition A, I mean, around rebuild Houston. And to the extent people agree, then they would certainly vote for it. If they don't believe in putting the lockbox, they would vote against. But everything else remains the same. This is not increasing a fee, not eliminating a fee, it's not removing any exemptions, committed to the exemptions, and that's it on Proposition A. On Proposition B, which deals with the firefighters' union petition that was brought to the city, which we are obligated to put on the ballot, the firefighters' union petition would mandate the city in the first year to provide a pay raise to the 4,000 firefighters of a minimum of 25%, costing at a minimum of $98 million, $295 million over the next three years. Let me be very clear again, and I'll say it over and over again. This administration has offered the firefighters a 9.5% pay raise over three years. And over three years, the cost of that is $69 million over three years. Okay? Versus what Proposition B is mandating. Proposition B mandates a minimum pay raise of 25%, and over three years costing $295 million. The offer that the city has put forth to the firefighters is a 9.5% pay raise costing $69 million over three years. So 69 million over three years versus $295 million over three years. And what I would simply say to the council, what I would say to the people in the city of Houston, that is something this city cannot afford. We simply cannot afford. And there will be massive reductions, massive structural changes that will take place. Now, some people are questioning whether or not this is a scare tactic or what have you. Let me be very clear to the council, let me be very clear to the people in this city. Time will tell. But I am not faking. I want the people in the city to understand. I want the council members to understand. If Proposition B should pass, hundreds of firefighters will, and I underscore that, will be laid off. And there are going to be a number of reductions in other areas of city services. I want you to be very clear. I don't want anybody to say, Mayor, you didn't say it. Or Mayor, you- Uh, Mayor, you were, you were nuanced in your position. I'm telling you, there is no way we're going to be able to balance our budget if this proposition passes without there being massive reductions. And I will start in the fire department first and then it will flow to other departments. There is no way to get around it. No way. And, and, and this is not about, uh, some tit-for-tat with, with firefighters. I love the firefighters. I respect them dearly. This is only an issue about our ability to pay, the city's ability to pay. That's the on, that is the only issue, okay? Um, and, and so those are the realities, uh, those are the two propositions. And that's what we are discussing, uh, throughout the city. Uh, we will continue, I think we got 10 more town hall meetings to go throughout the city, uh, in addition to visiting with various civic associations and talking to various churches. So there are not, there would be a lot of conversation between now and election time. Councilmember Laster.
Mayor, on a positive note, I just want to, uh, encourage you to, uh, we're looking forward to you being in District J next weekend.
Been looking forward to being in there.
Want to encourage you to maybe get there just a little earlier so you can do a personal inspection of the new swimming pool that the Turks and the city is building there for the fam- for the families in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Borkins.
Mayor, thank you. Good morning. First of all, I want to recognize, uh, Zante Williams, the newly, stand up, young man, the newly elected councilmember for Prairie View A&amp;M, and he's a student. He's a senior at Prairie View. Congratulations, man. And he's a good alpha man, Mayor. Welcome. He said he wanted to come and see what's going on down at the city and I asked him to come on down. Uh, Mayor, also, I have a question. There's some stuff out on the street about the Proposition B as well. The, I've heard nine and a half percent, 15%, I don't know if that's true or not. Is the offer, even though the, the initiative is on the ballot, is the, uh, the nine and a half percent still on the table?
The nine and a half percent has been offered. The nine and a half percent remains on the table.
So it's not 12, what, what did I hear? 12 and a half percent?
It's 9.5% costing $69 million over three years. That offer was extended to the firefighters. That offer remains on the table. And if the firefighters were to walk into this room right now and say, Mayor, we will accept 9.5%? Done, over. Let's move on to something else. The 9.5% offered by this, and I want to be very clear, offered by this administration has been offered, remains on the table, okay? And it is not saying you should accept 9.5% over three years and in return you have to give up, uh, X amounts and it, and it eats away at that 9.5. All of that is bogus. I want to be very clear. The 9.5% has been offered. The 9.5% over three years is still on the table for firefighters.
And let me ask another question, Mayor, with regards to the pay parity. Um, my understanding, if, once pay parity, if it's approved, let's say the voters approve it in December, that automatically, I think we have 5,000 police officers, 4,000 firefighters roughly, let's just play with those numbers, that the sergeants for the police, sergeant for fire are not equally receiving $1 a year annual salary. If the sergeant for one or the other have to make it equal, I mean, a complete parity, a college degree and the other one does not, that's not parity. So just because you have the title, my understanding, it has to be full parity? If that's correct? If you're lieutenant with the police department and lieutenant with the fire and you have a master's and this one does not, it's not equal pay? So if that's the case, my question is, is it the same financial impact of 69, 80 million or whatever?
The petition that's before the voters does not create parity. Let me be very clear. It creates, it creates parity only in terms of pay, but not in terms of functionality or training or hours. So for example, in order to be promoted within HPD, you need, um, let's say a college degree or the equivalent. To be promoted within fire, you do not need a college degree or the equivalent. So the only thing that this petition is saying to the voters, if there's a captain, described as a captain in fire and a captain in police, the pay should be the same, even though the requirements to become captain in police are more stringent or more, there are more requirements there than in fire. This is not, this is not parity at all. This is only parity in pay, not in function or requirements or eligibility.
Well, I, you know, I, okay, Mayor, okay, all right.
Uh, Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. And regarding Proposition B, I find it very interesting that, uh, the Firefighters Association has now, now taken their appeal to the state representatives and state senators. In a letter that was sent out last week, they are inviting the state representative and senators, and may I quote it, "We will behold, we will be holding a briefing on Tuesday, September 11th at 2:00 PM," which was yesterday, I'd wonder how many people showed up at our office. Ironic that we invited him five separate times to disseminate this information. And what he talks about in his mail-in is, "Much of the information disseminated by Proposition B opponents is misleading or exaggerating. The 4,000 men and women of the HPFFA believe the record should be set straight for you." Again, five times you had the opportunity to set the record straight and you chose not to. And it's interesting that they also state that the current offer of 9.5% raise over three years amounts to $1,000 per year for three years before major city demanding concessions. I did the math on that and it's not even close. It's way higher than $1,000, so I'd love to see the math on that. And my last statement will be, "Proposition B opponent, sky is falling. Fiscal impact analysis is also misleading. The mayor and the city finds way to fund priority projects. For example, since 2011, the city has given our brothers and sisters in blue." Always get a kick out of the brothers and sisters. If I hated my brother like they hate each other, we wouldn't be talking today. But they raised 30% since 2011 while we have received a 3% raise. Well, the record states that you received an offer of a 3.5% raise when Mayor Parker was mayor, 4%. And then again, a 9.5% raise in your first year over three years. So if the math is correct, it's almost 14% that you turned down. So don't tell me about how you only received a certain amount of a 3% raise when you turned down close to 14% over the last number of years. So I think we had the opportunity for Mr. Langdon to come appear at the BFA hearing. He chose not to, other than a, a public session on a Q and A. And, uh, it's ironic that they're now taking their appeal to the senators and the House of Representatives. So, um, we'll see where this ends up. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And Councilmember Borkins.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Martin, I just want to ask the question, or may either one who knows the numbers. My question is, when they turned down that raise under Parker, if I'm not mistaken, didn't they do that with the understanding that their pension would be, according to Parker, pension would be saved and to help balance the budget? Do y'all know the answer to that?
I, I can't, I can't speak to that. All I can tell you-
And Mayor, and I, it had, you inherited, we know that. And you're trying to work through it. But what I'm saying is, what, what, what people tend to forget is the sacrifice that people have to go through to get to, it's like going to college, high school, and get to that point, get to college, you can't find a job and you have the degree. When you sacrifice based on somebody's word and then they take that hit and then at the end, because it impacts their income and their family, right? I got that. And at the end, it has to be restructured. You got to understand, and I know you do, the frustration and the disappointment, but they helped the city balance the budget, the understanding I have, during previous years, when they bypassed those pay raises.
No, no, Councilmember, the firefighters on the pensions never gave up. They never made any concession.
So they didn't have two years where they-
From 2000, let's see, from 2001 until the time I came into office, the firefighters never gave any concessions to give the city relief to handle the pensions. It was municipal workers and police officers. Firefighters have knit on pensions, firefighters never conceded, never gave in at all, made no changes, not on pensions. And they fought against the pension reform. And let me just add, because people are saying, well, Mayor, um, um, because of the pension reforms, they're, 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 um, they have been adversely affected. I want people to understand, even after pension reform, even after pension reform, firefighters receive 95% of their active pay, even after pension reform. Police don't get 95%. Municipal workers certainly don't get 95%. And this is after pension reform. And I, and I just want to be very-
And Mayor, I understand, don't, you know, I hear you, Mayor, and I'm-
And, and to me, and, and the firefighters' union have, have sued the city on pension reform. We are in court on pension reform with the firefighters.
Well, I don't want to paint them like they're some enemy to the city, Mayor. But what I'm saying is, they, I hear what you, Mayor, but listen what I'm saying. When people ask me the question about the risk between police and fire, I tell people both of them put their life on the line every single day for the people in the city of Houston. And I, I know every councilmember, and you, Mayor, agree with that.
Right.
I don't like comparing the two. I believe both public safety should be, be paid maximum benefit in any city in the country. This has, I know you're saying this is not on the ballot, the whole nine yards. I wish there was a way we could, like Councilmember Castex Tatum talked about, if it passed, have a, 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 a cost associated, some way we can make whole our police and fire, uh, whether it's a, a, a dollar tax, I mean, a penny tax on a hundred thousand dollar day, something, than to just deal with what we have because it's creating a wedge between our public safety, which is not healthy for the city, it's killing morale and, and we shouldn't be in this position. And it appears that the leadership is against one entity of public safety and, and that's not a good position.
But the leadership is not against, this administration is not against police and not against fire. It's not against police or fire. What I would say to you, take fire out of the equation. Suppose this was a referendum being brought by police. I would be opposed. The city of Houston cannot afford to pay any employee group. Take, eliminate fire, just eliminate fire, okay? Let's, let's just say, you know, let's just say it was police, fire, municipal workers or group eight. What I am here to say to you is that the city of Houston cannot afford to pay any employee group a 25% pay raise. It doesn't matter who the group is. So let's just take, let's, let's just take, let's assume there's no particular group identified in Proposition B, okay? My position would be just as adamant and the same. The city of Houston is not in a position to pay any employee group a 25% pay raise at a minimum. Can't do it, can't afford it. Councilmember Kubash.
Mayor, I've been to, to both of the meetings and I know people are confused about the, uh, the rebuild and why it's on the ballot. You know, it doesn't seem to make sense to them when they realize there's not, not going to actually be a change. Are, are you going to prepare or have the staff prepare some type of a pass out, uh, at, at these, the last two, we didn't have a pass out. It, it might be good if we could put something in writing that people could take with them because that is a confusing issue.
Yeah, and we, and we are, we're going to do that, we're doing that. But I would tell you, the only reason, the only reason why it's on the ballot is because the court said it was unclear as to what, people may have been unclear as to what they were voting for in 2010. And so the courts have mandated us to put it back on, on the ballot.
Well, some believe that if we vote no, that the, that, that the tax, that the, uh, the impervious tax goes away. Some believe if we vote yes, that-
Yeah, and that's why, and, and Councilman, that's why we are having these town hall meetings and discussing it to let people know that's not the case. The only issue is if you vote, if you vote for Proposition A, you're putting a lockbox around the revenue that's generated and will be generated. If you vote no, the lockbox is not there and this, this mayor, this administration or any future mayor administration could then use the dollars for general purposes. So basically what Proposition A does is that it, it simply places, it make, it makes it a true dedicated fund for flooding, uh, drainage and streets. But it does not at all, uh, eliminate, add to, increase, uh, the fees or the revenue. And it doesn't eliminate, and, and all of the exemptions and everything that are currently in place remain in place. Um, so all of that exists. So that's why we keep, you know, we're going out and we're telling people that, and quite frankly, I think as you've seen, once people hear that, they don't have any questions. Okay? All right. Thank you all. Uh, and now let's move to the consent agenda.
Okay, under the miscellaneous category, there's only one item. Item one, is there a motion?
Move.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, discussion, in favor, opposed, granted.
Under the except work, item three has been removed for separate consideration. Is there a motion on the ballot?
Move.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, discussion, in favor, opposed, granted.
Under the property, let's say ordinance and a motion, is there a motion?
Move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, discussion, in favor, opposed, granted.
Under purchasing and tabulation of bids, items 11, 13, and 16 have been removed for separate consideration. Is there a motion on the ballot?
Move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, discussion, in favor, opposed, granted.
Okay, under the ordinance category, item 31 has been pulled from the agenda and will not be considered. Item 32 has not been received and will be considered at the end of the agenda that's received during the course of the meeting. Also noted on your pull sheet that the supplemental posting, item 39, had not been received. It has been received and will be put in its normal order. Items removed for separate consideration are items 18 through 23, 26, 27, 30, and 34. Just need a vote.
Discussion, 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 in favor, opposed, granted.
Okay, items removed for separate consideration, item three, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Oh, I didn't know.
It's been moved and seconded on, on item three, on item three. Discussion, discussion, in favor, opposed, granted, on three.
Item 11, is there a motion?
Move.
Second.
On item 11, it's been moved and seconded on 11. Discussion on 11. Discussion, in favor, opposed, granted.
Item 13, is there a motion?
Move.
Second.
Moved and seconded on item 13. Discussion on 13, in favor, opposed, granted.
Item 16, is there a motion?
Move.
Second.
Moved on 16, moved and seconded on 16. Discussion on 16, discussion, in favor, opposed, granted.
Okay, item 18 is an ordinance.
On item 18, discussion on 18. Discussion on 18, 18, in favor-
Mayor.
Councilmember Borkins.
Hey, Mayor, got a question. I'm definitely supporting this here. Can you explain to, um, the listening audience what this appropriations will do?
Uh, this is, um, in accordance to the GLO, this is, uh, provides, it's the, uh, funds provided for the, for buyout program. And once approved, once any definitive action is taken, then it has to come, it will come back to council on those definitive steps.
And this is money that came from the federal government to the state through GLO? That we're waiting on additional money to help our people in this city?
That's correct, for 2016.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure. Yeah. Uh, Councilmember Laster.
Mayor, I'd just like to add to that, the qualifier that this is focused on the 2016 floods.
Absolutely.
Not, not the Harvey flood.
That's correct. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other discussion on 18? Discussion, in favor, opposed, granted on 18.
19 is an ordinance.
On item 19. Discussion on 19. Discussion, in favor, opposed, granted on 19.
20 is an ordinance.
On item 20. Discussion on 20. Discussion on 20, in favor, opposed, granted on item 20.
21 is an ordinance.
On item 21. Discussion on 21. Discussion, in favor, opposed, granted on item 21.
22 is an ordinance.
On item 22. Discussion on 22. Discussion on 22, in favor-
23 is an ordinance.
Opposed, granted on 22. Oh, 23. Discussion on 23. Councilmember Stoddard, 23.
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge, uh, the Director Cheeks is, um, answering my questions and getting back to us in a, um, time, for the time-sensitive matter. I think this is, um, something that we need to continue to stay on top of and make sure that we're doing the right thing for employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on item 23? 23. In favor, opposed, granted on 23.
26 is an ordinance.
On item 26. Discussion on 26. Discussion, in favor, opposed, granted on item 26.
27 is an ordinance.
On 27. Councilmember Stoddard, on item 27.
Thank you. Um, I, I'm supportive of this item. Of course, it's a closed captioning and, um- Of course, it's a closed captioning and, um, the interpreter, interpreting services, Nightingale has a longstanding reputation in the deaf community. Um, my only question, and I think Maria probably can follow up with me, is to answer the question of the level of service and what the, they feel are the matches for the different levels. A level-two interpreter is, uh, much different than a level-five, and level-five would be in a formal setting or an emergency setting. So at least that's been my experience over the years. I haven't revisited it in a long time, so if I could get an update from Maria on that and how we're making sure that we're matching the level of interpreters with the, um, the needs of, of the citizens. Thank you.
Certainly. And Maria will, will follow up with you. Any other discussion on item twenty-seven? Twenty-seven. In favor, opposed, granted on item twenty-seven.
Thirty is an ordinance.
On item thirty. Discussion on item thirty. Discussion, in favor, opposed, granted on item thirty.
Thirty-four is an ordinance.
On item thirty-four. Councilmember McGaigus on item thirty-four.
Thank you, Mayor. This project will widen the public sidewalks surrounding Gus Watham Golf Course from three foot wide to eight foot wide and connect to the Brace Bayou Hike and Bike Trail. This will encourage even more pedestrians and cyclists to come and enjoy this beautiful property or just to get some more exercise. When council agreed to work with the Houston Golf Association to restore Gus Watham Golf Course, one of the commitments I made to District I residents was that we needed to provide more amenities for non-golfers. So in addition to this trail connector, my office is working with the Parks Board and the Parks Department to build a new dog park in the next few months across the street from the golf course. And we are working with the Houston Bike Chair to install a B-cycle station as well. We're looking forward to getting the sidewalk project going and hope that this, that it will be completed very soon. So I appreciate y'all's support. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Borghans.
Tag, Mayor. I'm tagging it. Unless he release, Councilman Martin, if Councilmember McGaigus don't give us a tee time early on the opening, we gonna tag his items. What you think about that? We can't do, can't do that? Okay. Well, we gonna let you go, Councilmember McGaigus. You gonna hook us up? No, we look forward to supporting. Rob, you did a great job on this project, Councilmember. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion on item thirty-four? In favor, opposed, granted on item thirty-four.
Okay, that completes the items on the consent agenda. Item thirty-five is to receive nominations on the land, uh, Houston Land Bank Board of Directors, positions six and seven.
So, I have written my first six.
Okay. And, uh, I have a written nomination for position six. Vice Mayor Protem Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. In front of you, uh, we have, uh, you should have an in-office memo, uh, with Pastor Dr. Steve Hall for the reappointment to position six for the Houston Land Bank of, Board of Directors.
Thank you. And then, uh, Councilmember Gaigus on position seven.
I'm pleased to nominate Mr. Juan Vasquez to position seven on the Houston Land Bank Board. His resume has been distributed, redistributed to all council members.
Thank you. Uh, are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Is there a motion to close?
Move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to close nominations. Any objection? Chair is down and the motion is granted.
Okay, item thirty, this is under matters held. Item thirty-seven. I'm so, I'm sorry. I picked up too much. Okay, here he is. Okay. We need to set a motion, uh, have a motion to set a date to receive nominations for the Houston area library automated network. Is there a motion to set next council meeting?
Move.
Then moved and seconded on thirty-sixth. I set the mo, to set the date. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Discussion? In favor, opposed, granted.
Okay, now then, matters held. Uh, under, uh, thirty-seven is an ordinance. Just need a vote.
On thirty-seven. Councilmember Stoddick on thirty-seven.
Thank you, Mayor. I, um, I appreciate the opportunity for, um, the, the extra look on this for the speakers that came down and those that were concerned about the ADA build-out and that the developer is going to pay as agreed rather than, uh, going, going to this budget. And that is, if there's anyone that, uh, knows otherwise, otherwise I will be supporting this item to move forward. Thank you.
Any, any other discussion on item thirty-seven? Discussion? In favor, opposed, granted on item thirty-seven.
Thirty-eight is an ordinance.
On item thirty-eight. Councilmember Stoddick on thirty-eight.
Thank you, Mayor. I, again, um, as I stated earlier when we were speaking on, uh, the Addicks Dam area in Northwest, I, I've taken an extra look, and I know you've, you've indicated, we had a conversation briefly before the meeting, that you've, uh, your team has looked at these items closely and vetted them. I still would like to have that opportunity to ask some additional questions, and Deputy Director at Harris County Flood Control said he would, could answer us, answer the questions if he were given more time. So I'm asking for, uh, making a motion for a two-week delay.
Okay. Councilmember, Councilmember Stoddick, uh, put forth a motion for a two-week delay on item thirty-eight. It's been seconded by Councilmember Kubash. Uh, any discussion? In discussion? In favor, opposed, granted on the motion.
Okay, item thirty-nine was the supplemental posting. It's, it's an ordinance.
On item thirty-nine, the supplemental. Item thirty-nine. Discussion, discussion, in favor, opposed, granted on item thirty-nine.
Okay, that completes the items on the agenda.
Thank you very much. We start with Councilmember Kubash on the pop-up. Uh, going to Councilmember Lee. Thank you. Let's keep it going. Going to Councilmember Travis. (laughing).
It's a wave, man. It's a wave.
(laughing). Going to Councilmember Travis. Councilmember, Councilmember Travis passes. Going to Councilmember-
Listen, I didn't tag anything today, so at least let me say what I have to say about , uh, community. Um, but, no, thank you, uh, again. I wanted, we had this discussion yesterday during public session, but I just wanted to applaud the collaboration that, uh, was described, uh, yesterday during public session by, uh, Juan Sorto and all those that were involved in that. I really, really would love to see that happen again and, and however that needs to take place because, again, as you've mentioned today, the Harvey resources, we're not going to expect to see another supplemental round. I'm going to keep pushing for it. I think we should all keep pushing for it. But in the interim, where we fill in those gaps are so important. We had a, a, a woman, uh, there was a New York Times article, um, we talked to a woman, um, who had been denied her FEMA benefits. And when you look in her house, and I stood in her house, it was clear as day that she obviously had had severe flood damage in her home, and there was mold visible to me. Um, it was, it was very dire conditions, and she actually had to be asked to leave by her doctor after she had a surgery performed. Well, anyway, uh, unfortunately, it took an article from the New York Times to be published before FEMA contacted her back about her appeal. She has now received her, has been, has been granted her appeal and has received her funding, but it should not take a New York Times piece to be something that gets FEMA to get those, those fundings in pla, funding in place. And moreover, we don't know how many people are in the exact same circumstances as she is. So my point of bringing this up is to say, we've got to get more, more foot, more people on the ground checking on people who are not necessarily reaching out to us, and, and that requires funding. If, if you're in a case manager position and you've got a list of thousands of cases or hundreds of cases or dozens, whatever it is, and somebody you keep calling doesn't answer the phone, at some point you do move on. And especially if you have so many open cases. And so we need more of these case managers out, being able to be the foot, the, you know, foot soldiers on the ground checking on each person, making sure they didn't get stuck. Because I'm telling you, from what I've seen, there are too many people here in our city that have gotten stuck and are quietly suffering in silence, and we're not going to have a New York Times piece to expose that for each person. And so we can't, we, it cannot be the case that you have to have that type of attention to get your case heard and make sure that the right thing is done. It took her less than a week to get her funding after something like that was exposed, but it shouldn't have had to do that. We shouldn't have had to even have that happen in the first place. So again, I want to share that message to anyone listening and, and at the state legislative less, level and our state government, but also to the federal government, that we are not out of the woods as it relates to the individual pathways that people have to go through in order to traverse the very tangled web that is known as recovery.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Knox?
I'd like to restart that attempt at a wave. I'm gonna pass.
(laughing). Okay. Councilmember says nervous.
I have something to say. I'll be brief, I promise. But I, I wanted to just, um, give a plug for the, our second, um, Economic Development Subcommittee on Education meeting this afternoon at two o'clock. The theme of the meeting this time is, um, public-private partnerships and collaborations that enhance educational and workforce development opportunities. Um, so there will be two presentations. The first one will be on pre-apprenticeship programs that introduce career opportunities in construction trades. And then the second one is, um, exploring, uh, some, a nonprofit model to support high need schools. We've invited, um, a, a, a group, um, a nonprofit group from, um, Los Angeles that the city has identified as an interesting model that, that we want to learn more about, and they'll be making a presentation about that. So join us today. It's at two o'clock. Um, it will, uh, from two to three, immediately following, there'll be a brief, um, networking reception in the Legacy Room. Um, uh, everyone's invited. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Robinson. Okay. Councilmember Borghans.
Thank y'all for giving me all this time here. Uh, first of all, let me say, let me remind those who, uh, participate in our Second Chance Jobs Fair. We have a lot going on District D, but Second Chance Jobs Fair, um, we had a, a contest where we ended up, uh, working with donors such as Jeanette Rash and Mr. Palmer, who donated four pickup trucks, uh, to our cause to create opportunities for entrepreneurship, and I will load them up with, uh, each truck with lawn equipment. Uh, so this week, we will have, uh, the two donors that will pull from the, um, the bowl of five hundred candidates, uh, and, and wind it down to ten, no, twenty-five, I'm sorry, and then we will pull from there ten, and within the next two weeks, we will make the, uh, the winners known. So I just want to thank everybody who came out, and I must admit, Mayor and colleagues, this is the first year, uh, being the fourth year of the Second Chance Jobs Program, that we have had companies giving us strong feedback on hiring people from the fair. Uh, normally, it's kind of hard to gauge that because you never know when they gonna make the decision, but we're getting a lot of feedback, and I'm excited that a lot of people are getting jobs. Secondly, in, uh, second, in 2014, when I was first running in office, I received a call from a young lady in the Sunnyside area who was, uh, had some concerns about the tennis court. It was just a concrete court with a chain net. Uh, and she was really concerned, and she continued to call. She's also a junior, a senior, I think, at Texas Southern University. Uh, I'm proud to say that on last Thursday, I can't thank Director Steve Williams, I mean Steve Wright and Lucy Carrera enough for, uh, helping me with this cause. Uh, we celebrated, um, the courageous outpour from Ms. Rebecca Williams. With, uh, uh, I received a call from Lucy telling me about a foundation that consists of professional tennis players that contribute to it, uh, uh, contribute to helping to resurface the court, new nets, and it has one of those backgrounds around the fence that says Sunnyside. Uh, I think it says Sunnyside Tennis Center, but it's Sunnyside, and it's a beautiful, I encourage you to go out and check it out. But the moral behind this story for me is not only they have a beautiful tennis court, but one voice. The age does not matter, can make a difference if it's, if it's good for your community. And I want to thank Rebecca Williams for having that voice. Um, on Monday, October first, I'll be hosting my fifth annual Swingin' for Seniors Golf Tournament, where we raise money to help seniors in District D with minor home repairs at no cost to them. Uh, Mayor, I hope you can come out and, and I know you're a hell of a golfer. I've seen you hit the ball, Mayor, so I hope you come and play with us.
Well, you certainly have seen me hit it.
(laughing) We will have trophies, prizes, and a silent auction, breakfast, lunch, and so much more at Herman Park Golf Course. And I want to thank, uh, Herman, Mayor, because they have been very generous in helping us, uh, as a title sponsor in terms of giving us a break, because they know the money, 100% of the money, help these senior citizens. 100%. And so we're so excited about it because that's most of your cause. I want to thank Ms. Dorothy Booker, who chairs that committee, uh, and her board, for doing this on a volunteer base, no basis. Nobody get a dime but the seniors in the district. Also want to give a shout out to Councilmember Mike Knox. I know Mike is left. He has been, since he's been on council, uh, a participant every year, and I, I thank the council member for that. Uh, last cop, yeah, well, yeah, last thing I want to mention is, on, uh, the first two Saturdays in October, we'll be hosting our District D Day of Cleaning. Uh, we will be delitering, uh, the, the district and assessing the entire district as much as we can. We're looking for volunteers, corporate volunteers, whether Center Point, Reliant, Chevron, who our goal is to have about five hundred volunteers to come out and assist us in this community project. For information or to register to volunteer, please email my office at districtd@houstontext.gov or visit Eventbrite and, and search for District D Day of Cleaning. I want to publicly thank, uh, Ms. Coffey with Solid Waste, uh, Department of Neighborhoods, Takasha Francis Shop, uh, again, Steve Wright and the Parks Department, and Keep Houston Beautiful for, uh, assisting with this effort. We're excited about it, and we're gonna clean up that district. I said last, but this is the last from Councilmember Christie. Civic Club Meetings, on Wednesday, September 12th, which is today's, Museum Park will meet at 5:30 PM, uh, at the Museum of Fine Arts. Brookhaven, uh, will meet at 6:00 PM at the Reed Road, Sunnyside Reed Road storefront, and Foster Place will meet at St. Mary's, uh, Church across from Cully Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Christie.
And councilmembers, if you get a chance to see the update on Memorial Park, uh, it's going to be, uh, one of the best in the nation, if not the best, and it'll make Central Park in New York City look like Kittyland. Uh, thank you to the taxpayers, to the philanthropists, to ters, um, over there. It's gonna be fantastic, uh, so along with Herman Park and parks like Levy Park, uh, we're gonna have the best in the nation. Uh, second thing is, uh, the nine eleven run was Saturday, and it's very patriotic, and it's just, uh, uh, it's been moved from Ellington, uh, Air Force Base to here last year, and, uh, well-attended, and it was a good day to remember nine eleven, and, uh, thanks the, the city and, uh, all the, um, veteran groups that were there.
Thank you. Councilmember Laster.
Well, Mayor, I was gonna pass, but I just will say, uh, following upon my colleagues' comments, that, uh, I invite the entire city of Houston to go see Levy Park. It's a beautiful park. Um, it's the ki, it's the aspirational park that we would all love to have, and I certainly hope that, uh, the community gets behind those kinds of efforts, that every district can have a Levy Park. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, Mayor Protem, Ellen Corwin.
Thank you very much, and thank you to both Council, uh, Member Christie and, um, Council, and, and previous council member's comments, uh, about Levy Park and about Memorial Park. Um, I just have to brag on the fact that since they're both in C, I appreciate your I just have to brag on the fact that since they're both in C, I appreciate your kind comments. Thank you very much. Um, and finally, I would like to say that, um, this coming Tuesday night and Wednesday is the holiday of Yom Kippur, which is the fast day, um, in the Jewish faith. Consequently, I won't be, uh, at council next Wednesday, and our offices will be closed. And I wish all my fellow religious, uh, religion, um, and I, I wish all my fellow members of the Jewish religion, let's put it that way, uh, an easy fast. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Protem Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor, I would just say, uh, as I mentioned earlier, last night, we lost another great Houstonian. Uh, a gentleman by the name of Jared Scales, uh, from the North Side, went to Cashmere High School. He was part of the, the duo running back of the 1980, was it '86, uh, Cashmere Football Team Hampton Scale, so he was a running back with Hampton, Rodney Hampton. Uh, Jared Scales, uh, started, uh, in 94, started a, a great barbecue place called, uh, Triple J's, off of Homestead in District B on the north. And, uh, my prayers go out to his dad, JB Scales, him and my dad hung out back in the day, as he so tell me, we, we used to, they used to skip school and drink wine. Uh, every time I see him over at Mr. A's. His brother Jeff, who works, um, at the, at the establishment, and also to Rhonda, Rhonda his wife, where he met when they played foot, where he went to school and played football at Purdue. Uh, a member of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, she was a Silver Sorrow, as y'all say it. And, uh, prayers go out to his, his two boys, uh, Dylan and Jalen. And, um, you know, it's just a sad day, he was only 48 and he had a heart attack. And, um, just, you know, uh, when the, when the information gets out into the community, it's gonna be just very devastating. A local, homegrown boy, making his way with the support of his family, his friends, and the community, and has just established a great restaurant. And the Texans loved him, um, he catered to them often. Uh, part of the Houston Livestock Showroom Rodeo, where they won awards, part of the 2004 and the 2017 Super Bowl. And, uh, all the guys there, when you walked in and you're sitting in that long line, um, you know, they made you feel like family. Um, so the Corey Earl, Phipps, Monte Rico, Freddie, Kevin, Tim, Dwayne, Sean and Little Chris, you know, my prayers are with y'all, and, uh, God bless y'all.
Thank you. Let us know of the funeral arrangements. Okay, Councilmember Martha Castaglao.
All right, got a couple of, uh, great announcements, lots of good stuff happening in District K. Um, last night, had a great opportunity to attend the Keswick Ramblewood Civic Club. I always like to attend that civic club because that is, um, the neighborhood that I grew up in, and my daddy was there, so, uh, had a great opportunity to, uh, visit with them. They're excited about the Speed Cushions that are coming. Um, Councilmember Edwards also, uh, spoke to the, uh, members of the civic club there, so thank you to Ms. Skirlock and her team for always inviting and keeping us abreast of what's happening in Keswick Ramblewood. Also, last night, um, I attended the annual meeting of Westbury Civic Club. Want to send a special shout out to, um, Becky Edmondson, who, uh, presided over her last meeting, um, last night. She was the civic club president for the last eight years, and she has stepped down from that position, and, um, Mayor, we presented her with a proclamation, um, yesterday, you should have saw her face, she was surprised, she didn't know we were going to be presenting a proclamation, um, to her for her eight years of service. Councilmember Knox also attended that annual meeting. Um, Steve Costello was there, it was a great meeting, full of information, um, had about 150 of the residents from Westbury there for their annual meeting. So we had an opportunity to celebrate the great work that she's done over the last eight years. We're looking forward to, uh, working with Cindy Chapman as the new president of, uh, Westbury Civic Club, and those, uh, new board members that they have elected, um, there. Um, National Night Out on October the 2nd, we are asking all of our District K neighborhoods if you are planning an event, and we hope that you are, to register with our office, please email Joe Gadsden and let him know that you are planning, um, an event in your neighborhood, we want to try to visit. Uh, we will divide up our, uh, the staff and try to be out and have a, a great celebration and make sure we, um, get to know our neighbors and keep our, our neighborhoods safe. Um, also want to highlight the Manhood Camp that is happening in, in District K. It is a, um, youth, the youth leaders are encouraged to bring their middle school and high school young men to an overnight camp hosted by the Fountain of Praise Church. We've got several of our mega churches that have joined together for this, uh, Manhood Camp. Um, special shout out to Pastor Cumby at the Fountain of Praise and Ray Beatty, uh, Pastor Ray Beatty from, uh, Windsor Village United Methodist Church. On September the 28th through the 29th, at the Kingdom Builders Center on West Orem at 7:30 PM. If you are interested in bringing your, um, youth from middle school and high school to participate in the Manhood Camp, you can register at tfop.org/manhood, that's the Fountain of Praise Church, and, um, they are looking forward to having at least 200, um, young men from the community, uh, to participate in that amazing camp. On Saturday, I attended the Dumbarton Oaks Civic Club meeting at Townwood Park. Want to just thank Melva Thornton for always, um, keeping the District K office informed on what's happening in their neighborhood and working hard to keep her, her neighbors engaged. Um, last week, I also attended the Fort Ben ISD Update Meeting with Superintendent Dr. Dupree. Um, F, Fort Ben ISD is, um, having a $992 million bond referendum in the next election, so we did get an update. Want to let our Fort Ben residents know that on October the 16th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Willow Ridge High School, there will be a meeting to discuss the bond referendum, and we want to invite the community to participate. Um, and if they'd like a detailed list of the improvements by school, they can, um, find that on fortbenisd.com/bond. And I see that Adrian is in the audience today from Harris County Department of Education. We, um, passed the, uh, the, the case allocation. Uh, just want to say that after-school time is really critical time, um, and it's a vulnerable time during the, during the day when parents are working, and sometimes students don't, um, have their parental supervision, but we can supplement that with our after-school program. So special shout out to Case. We have several of our programs, um, in District K that apply for those grants. Last year, we allocated over $100,000 to after-school programming in the district. Um, we are looking forward to doing that again this year, um, just to make sure our kids have safe places to be in after-school time. Uh, that's it for what's happening in District K.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Starney.
Thank you. I, um, took a tour of the Joint Processing Center and, um, very impressed with the thought that was put into it. I'll, it, you know, my hope is, with the shortage of HPD officers, Mayor, that it's a quicker turnaround, more efficient turnaround for our officers to, um, get through the process and then get back out on the streets, because I think that's, you know, the purpose, so that they can handle the situations there. Um, and of course, there's a tour that's being set up for, uh, my colleagues. Unfortunately, I, I had a conflict of, of, of being in, out of town during that time, so the, I encourage you to please take this opportunity to take the tour. The gentlemen that, uh, Corden, the people that have worked on this are very proud of it, and you can see it in the way they, the time they spend in explaining everything. There's even tables in there with, have you been through them, Mayor? The checker tables?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, people are, are being detained for hours and hours and hours, so they're trying to keep everybody calm and, and do the best they can under the circumstances. So, once again, I, I think it's very thoughtful of what they've done in the, in that joint processing center, we appreciate it. I do know there's been a delay to December.
December.
And that's unfortunate. If there was a way to expedite that, I think that would be appreciated. Um, I also attended last Thursday the Houston Pet Set Fierce and Fabulous Soiree. Tina and Tama Lundquist have done a, a great job of, of bringing together, um, folks to, to contribute and to do the right thing for our pets. Um, it's about the animals, hashtag, I think is what she had, I think Councilmember Gallegos, um, I think that was her hashtag, their hashtag. I think they do a great job in our community, and I want to just give them a great big thank you for everything they do. Um, last Saturday, I want to congratulate Janice Weaver on, uh, the successful blood drive that she conducted. Um, per the Blood Center, the notes that I've received from Janice, they tripled the amount that has been given by a community and even, uh, corporate blood drive. Um, she said that Dr. Wright with Lone Star College wants to make it an annual event. So I want to give her a shout out for her work, and I know she's very passionate about it.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Yeah, so that's, that's a good thing. And then, um, the Public Safety and Homeland Security Committee meeting, I want to thank, uh, Dr. Stout for the update about the Houston Forensic Science Center. I think there's, you know, once again, we may not, you know, I have hesitation still on location, but the work they do is outstanding, and we need to continue to support them if at all possible, in any way we can. But, um, I, I, I know he's passionate about his job and, and the work that he does, and that is reflected in, in everything in his presentation as well. And then last, uh, last night, Mayor, you, you were there as well, um, and I think Councilmember Travis, we attended the West Houston Association's 2060 Plan Rollout. I appreciate their, their, their vision and working on this. I think that the planning is, is much needed. As, as we know, there's so much development between here and San Antonio, is all, I'm just gonna start saying it's between here and San Antonio, because it would be, soon we'll be connected. But we gotta be very responsible, respectful of that development, and the thought that they're putting into it is much appreciated. And I also spoke last evening at my shadow, at my neighborhood Civic Association, that I was president of for nine years, um, many moons ago, um, and I, we shared with them your material, Mayor, and, um, a number of things that are going on, and our desire to get Gessner done, started before we have another flood and we can't get to the hospital. So they, they are in agreement and very supportive. And then the last thing I have is, while you're having your, uh, District A on the 24th of September, my annual October, uh, my annual Public Safety Town Hall and Community Barbecue is October 11th, and you're confirmed to be there, along with Chief Fenner and Chief Penya, Penya. And you know that last year, we had four, we served 450 barbecue meals. So we're planning for 500 this year, just to make sure we don't run out, we don't have to skimp on any of the meals. So that open house is from 5:00 to 6:00, where we have the demonstr, the, uh, the tables for people to go around and meet the SWAT officers and see the demonstrations and displays. And then from 5:30 to 7:00 will be the catered barbecue, it'll be, uh, Pappas. And then from 6:30 to 7:00 will be the demonstrations upstairs this year, where we'll have, uh, HPD Billy Ray K-9 and a fire, uh, demonstration. And then from 7:00 to 8:00 will be the program, again, with our special guests, Mayor Turner, Chief Penya, Chief Fenner. And again, just don't forget, we have those fabulous door prize drawings that everyone appreciates and loves. So, once again, it's our cus, it's, it's what I call my customer appreciation, my constituent appreciation barbecue, so please come out and join us.
Thank, thank you. Councilmember Gallegos.
Thank you, Mayor. Last Thursday, Thursday, I had the opportunity to attend the 50th Annual Fiesta de Patricio Breakfast. I was proud to join you, Mayor, in recognizing Judge Armando Rodriguez, founder of the Fiesta de Patricio Parade. This year, the organization also recognized the work of Dolores Rodriguez-Gallegos and presented her with the Distinguished Hispanic Award. They were both here yesterday as well, and we all had the opportunity to recognize them as well. The Fiesta de Patricio Parade is scheduled for Saturday, September 15th, in downtown, beginning at 10:00 AM near the Minute Maid Park. I want to commend the Heritage Society on the unveiling of a beautiful new mural that showcases and celebrates the Mexican-American community in Houston. The mural, which was the product of artists Jesse Cifuentes and Laura Lopezcano, depicts the people, places, and events that have shaped our history and contributed to the success of our city. If you haven't had the chance to see it, stop by the Heritage Society at, uh, and, and take a look. I want to thank Houston Public Works once again for providing me and my team a tour of the progress of the Northeast Water Purification Plant Project. As we all know, the plant is undergoing a major expansion that will drastically increase the production of portable water for the region. Phase one is scheduled to be completed by 2021, and the second phase in 2024. With fully built out, the plant will be able to take in hundreds of millions of gallons of raw water from Lake Houston and produce as much as 400 million gallon, gallons of potable water each day. Enough water to sustain, to sustain our growing city and the region for another 50 years. I want to thank Director Haddock and Gary Norman in particular for arranging and joining us on the, the tour. On Saturday, I attended the first public meeting of the Southeast Mobility Plan, which will be used to guide the city's short, mid, and long-term multimodal mobility planning efforts. The study area is bounded by Interstate 610, State Highway 288, Sam Houston Toll Road, and Interstate 45 and Galveston Road. We had a good turnout, and I look forward to the next meeting in a few months. This, the mobility study was funded in part through District I service dollars. I had the opportunity to visit the Eastwood Civic Association, as well as the Pecan Park Civic Club meetings this week, to share updates on the great things happening in District I. I announced the upcoming September 22nd ribbon cutting for the beautiful new pedestrian bridge over Bray's Bayou at Mason Park, also the open house at Gus Worthing Golf Course on September 29th. We will be offering golf cart tours of the beautifully restored historic golf course. The Buffalo Bayou Partnership is hosting two community meetings this week, September 12th and 13th, for residents to help shape the future of Buffalo Bayou's east sector. The first meeting is scheduled for tonight at 6:00 at the Deluxe Theater on Lyons Avenue. A second meeting will be held tomorrow, Thursday, September 13th, at 6:00 PM at the Baker Ripley Community Center on Navigation. Please make plans to attend these meetings and share your input as the partnership works to develop the five-mile stretch of Buffalo Bayou from US 59 to the Turning Basin. Also, the I-45 Coalition is hosting a public meeting at the Houston Public Library, Central Library, 500 McKinney Street, tomorrow, September 13th, from 5:30 to 7:00. They will be discussing the planned I-45 realignment. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no one else in the queue, we stand adjourned. We stand adjourned.[301.72]
Okay, let me, let me, let me just make a few comments first, just about the weather, weather conditions as of today. It appears that we will have about two to four inches of rain from Thursday to Sunday. Isolated areas could receive higher amounts of rain or rain, which could result in feeder road, street flooding, especially south of I-10. But it does appear that things are starting to improve somewhat. The tropical depression that we have been monitoring looks like the center will land along the southeast coast of Texas, closer to Corpus Christi. Houston probably will get some rain from this storm. Slower moving storms could cause us more concern, of course, than the fast-moving ones. We have been participating in telephone conferences for the last, for the past five days with the National Weather Service and the Texas State Operations Center. The below departments, these departments have been notified and are ready to respond. OEM, Office of Emergency Management personnel, have been actively monitoring the weather and is prepared to activate the EOC if necessary. And we are not activating it at this moment, but that could change. OEM monitors the rainfall amount, street flooding, and bayou levels. The bayous are not expected at all to exceed their banks this weekend. OEM will send out warning information on alert, Houston and on social media as needed. Of course, the Houston Fire Department has been staging high-water vehicles throughout the city and HP, HPD, doing the same thing. And the Houston Public Works Department has staged barricades at 40 high-water locations and is prepared to shut down these locations if, if, again, if necessary. Alex and Barker Reservoirs have received less than three inches of water this week, which means that they're almost empty. And so, we are standing, we are standing ready and we are prepared. We have taken those proper, necessary steps to prepare for various weather events. We know things can change, but we feel comfortable with the preparation that's already been done. And again, as a cautionary note, we ask people, take advantage of this moment to prepare. We're still in hurricane season, you know, so just do some things now so you don't have to rush in case something should happen. If not this time, you know, you know, it could be next week or what have you, what have you, because we're still in hurricane season. But from all indications, you know, we feel comfortable with the stuff that has been done and there does seem, it does appear that the system is moving more to the south and, but we should, we probably will expect some rain, about two to four inches between now and now and Sunday. Takes any questions? Anybody may have.
Today, City Council passed, I think, two items for fire equipment. I think 11 was 3 million and 24 was 4 million. Would, if Proposition B passed, apart from what you've already said about salaries, is there a chance that the city will also be impacted in terms of providing equipment for safety personnel?
There's no question about that. If Proposition B should, should pass, not only are you dealing with significantly layoffs of personnel from fire as well as public safety personnel, parks, libraries, health clinics, you name it, but even as it relates to the, to the fire department, Proposition B doesn't have, doesn't, doesn't have any impact, I mean, doesn't do anything about equipment, training, all of those measures. It's all only about pay. So that to the extent Proposition B should pass, it's going to also significantly hurt the operations of the Houston Fire Department. I mean, that's, that's a given.
Mayor, do you feel like your biggest challenges, town halls in general, communication to the public about Prop B, does it feel like the biggest challenge is to convince folks that this isn't a referendum against firefighters? And I know you've been pretty clear about your view on that, but does that feel like the biggest barrier to you?
Well, I mean, you know, we all love firefighters, you know? It's almost like putting, putting a referendum on the ballot and saying, do you, do you like police or not? Okay? The overwhelming percentage of people are going to say yes. If you put a referendum on the ballot and people are thinking, is this a question, do you like firefighters? People are going to say yes, you know? I've talked to some business leaders that have said, you know, Mayor, we don't want to, we don't want to get into a battle or, or have anyone questioning, or firefighters questioning our support for them. We rely on them. I got that, you know? But what the public has to understand, if that's what's on the ballot by the union, it's not whether you, you love firefighters or not. If you ask me, do I love firefighters? I'm going to raise my hand quickly. And my record speaks to that over 30 years, okay? The question is about what, what the union is asking for pay and the city's ability to pay. And, and it could be any group. And then you should, as I've said, and I think you've been at it some of the time on meetings, you can take fire out of it. Is the city in a position to pay any employee group a 25% pay raise at a minimum? And the answer is no. It doesn't matter whether it's fire, police, or municipal workers. The answer would be the same and my position would be the same. We cannot do it. We cannot afford it. The money is not there. And for some reason, people are thinking, and the firefighter union is thinking, that, you know, that this money is within the city's coffers and the city's ability to pay, and so it's about doing it. The answer is no. So, I still respect the firefighters. I appreciate them. I know that they have families. I know they are deserving of a pay raise, okay? I know they are deserving of a pay raise. And we have offered them, and it remains on the table, a 9.5% pay raise over three years, and over three years costing the city $69 million versus what they are asking the public to mandate the city to pay. And that is a, at a minimum, a 25% pay raise in the first year, costing over three years $295 million. And there is no way the city is in a position to do that without laying off firefighters, without hurting public safety, and impacting library parks and clinics as well as the other departments. Now, that's, that's factual, okay? So this is not, this is not the mayor being mad with the firefighters. No. Please bear in mind, I'm, I'm very cognizant of the fact that firefighters were very supportive of me when I ran for mayor, okay? And over the last, my entire time in 27 years in the legislature, and I've been very supportive of them, and even as mayor, still supporting. This is only, this is a question of the city's ability to pay. Are they asking, is, is the union asking for more than what the city can pay? That's, that's, that's the issue. And quite frankly, you know, when I came into office, you know, what was demanded of me was to get our finances under control. Pensions was the issue when I came into office. The business community was pushing me. Mayor, the city is paying too much on these runaway costs, runaway pension costs, okay? The people in the city were saying to me, get this under control. Well, we got it under control. And the firefighters fought us on the reforms. And now are you, are we to say, and are people okay with us going back to that same financial nightmare when they are, when the union is asking for a huge amount in a pay raise increase? And the argument that they're saying is that, you know, we are so far behind, catch us up to where, quote unquote, we're police. Well, what people, what they're not saying, the police raises have come over an extended period of time. Police didn't get all of that in one, in one year. It was, the police raises have come over an extended period of time. And if the firefighters, for example, had accepted the 4% in the last administration, if they were to accept the 9.5% that I've offered over three years, which is currently on the table, then that's close to what, 13.5%? So, this is not about being against the firefighters. You know, people make that argument, that's a bogus argument, it's not about that. But I do look at the numbers and it's my responsibility to stay within our financial means and not to offer any group, any amount that would sacrifices, sacrifice the services that we can provide to the people in this city.
Just briefly follow up again. I mean, based on some of the public questions at the town halls and just your general interactions with constituents, do you feel like folks are understanding, you know, this, this distinction that you aren't against firefighters, as you say? Do you feel like that's being received and understood?
I think in, in, in both the town hall meetings that, that we've had thus far, people have walked away and I think that, like, there's any question? No. No one is seeing this as being administration being anti the firefighters, and it's not even presented in that way. You know, for example, there was one question that came up at the last one about, Mayor, you know, how many firefighters live inside the city, outside the city? You know, I just not even deal with that, okay? Because the fact is, they're working in the city of Houston and for the people and businesses within the city of Houston. And again, they are, you know, they are deserving of a pay raise. Nobody is arguing against that. The question is, you know, well, I'll put it this way. I think all of you all employ, you go and ask your bosses for a pay raise, a huge one. Do you think you're entitled to it? You know? But I'm just saying, I think most people will take whatever raise they can get. Doesn't mean because your employer says, no, I cannot afford that. Would your employer be against you? If you go into your office and go to, if you go to your boss, to your employer, go to the Houston Chronicle, I think you're deserving of a 50% pay raise or 25% pay The Chronicle says no, are they against you? You go to the television station. You all work very hard. I'm here, City Council here, you're here every Wednesday. There are storms that are brewing, you're out covering the storms, okay? I know with Hurricane Harvey, you all were with us 24/7. Go to your employer and ask them for this huge pay raise. If they say no, does that mean they hate you? Why should you treat the city any different? Just because the city said we can't afford it, doesn't mean that we're anti-police, or municipal workers, or fire. Why does that make this administration anti? Because we simply say that we don't have the, you, you're demanding a 25, you're not negotiating. Now, the firefighters' union is not negotiating. They walked away from the collective bargaining table. And what they are saying is that the public loves us so much, they will give us whatever we demand. And being, you know, and what I'm simply saying is that the, the demand by the union is unreasonable and it is way more than what the city can afford to pay. And that's factual, that's not emotional, and that's, and that's not saying any one of us dislike firefighters.
Mayor, on the, today we, we voted on the 16 BGDR, 16 funds and closing out the old Allison. The latest figure, the numbers that I heard was that we would be getting the first dollars from Harvey beginning of next year. Talk about the, how slow that is and why there needs to be a faster way to get these dollars to people.
Because, because people need, one, people need the, the money. When, when you are impacted by natural disaster, for example, like Hurricane Harvey, you know, people are dealing with the displacement or being out of their homes or living in their homes that need to be significantly repaired. Now, there are two things, I want to make sure that we're on the same page. The CDBG dollars, that $1.14 billion for housing, that supposedly will come by the end of November.
Is that the city of Houston or is that coming to the state?
That's, that, well, coming from, from, from the feds to GLO and coming to the city. And, and what we are being told, it should get to the city, hopefully, for housing by the end of November, that it keeps kind of being pushed back.
I think the GLO told me that now it's beginning of November, of 19, but I might...
And I'll check too. But I know the CDBG funding for mitigation, for infrastructure, those dollars are not coming until 2019.
Maybe that's what they were talking about.
Okay. So there's the CDBG dollars, which should be more than a billion, about the same for housing, those dollars won't be here till 2019. We're clear about that, okay? Initially, the CDBG dollars for housing, initially we were told like, you know, September. Then it went kind of like October. Now is the end of November. So I'm hoping it doesn't push into 2019.
Isn't this federal bureaucracy, just, it just takes forever?
Yes, because, as you see today, we're, we're dealing with dollars that have come in for 2016. Those dollars are just not being dealt, coming in now. Federal government is, it has to do a much better job of streamlining the operations, has to, because there are too, there are too many families, for example, who are still impacted from Hurricane Harvey, and we're talking about more than a year out. And I have, I have visited communities from Cashmere Gardens, Kingwood, Independent Heights, Marlin Brace Wood, West Houston. And there are people who are still out of their homes, or they're still repairing their homes, and, and people literally have run out of money, or didn't, didn't have the money in the first place. And but for the nonprofits, the business community, local relief funds, they would still be in a, in a, in a horrible shape. And there are many who still, where there's not enough money to go around, are still without. So people need them, these, these federal dollars quicker rather than later. And there has to be a way that the federal government can streamline the process in order to get these dollars to the, to the impacted areas and to the people themselves much, much quicker. We cannot be waiting more than a year. On average, there's 16, let's say, two years plus. You know, so we have to do a much better job. Okay? Thank you, Allison, very much.
That concludes the agenda session of the Houston City Council. Remember, you can see the City Council replay of the public session Thursday at 7:00 PM and the replay of the City Council Agenda Session on Friday at 7:00 PM. The complete replay of the Houston City Council can be seen in its entirety on Saturday at 6:00 PM.
There are companies that have business credit that can be found and done in Bradstreet and other business credit bureaus. This is just another tool to help you be more credible. And as a small business, that's important, right? Because they don't know you, you're just a small guy, girl, you're trying to grow your business. Credibility is a value added for you. Next. So when should you start building business credit? Who said that? Who said that? I thought it was a little girl. Right. You know, they're, they're used to answering questions in school. You're right, you should start building credit today, and basically, it's before, not after you need it. Because the other thing that as entrepreneurs, we make a...